Based on a number of different things, race, on the type of crime, white collar crime versus BIPOC crimes, whether it would be one that has violence or one where violence was against others was not involved. Also looked at substance abuse and that it often is not treated as an actual behavioral health issue, but simply as a crime. So finding out how to get that stigma taken away so that it actually gets the treatment to help improve outcomes from people, especially those who are addicted. And I think that covered all four committees.
Thank you, Councilmember Fincher. Madam Mayor, that ends our report. As you can see, all of my colleagues are fairly busy with a lot of meetings outside of just council. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we will move on in the agenda. We have a public hearing. We do not have one this evening, so that brings us down to public comment.
Thank you.
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 Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us for the Kent City Council meeting for May 21, 2024. If you could all please rise and join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Kim, could you please call the roll? Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor Ralph?
Here.
Council President Corr?
Here.
Councilmember Boyce?
Here.
Councilmember Boyd?
Here.
Councilmember Fincher?
Here.
Councilmember Larmour? Councilmember Michaud? Councilmember Troutner?
Here.
Thank you. Thank you. We are going to move on in the agenda to the approval of the agenda. Any changes?
No changes from staff.
Right, thank you. Okay, moving on to public communications. We will start with the recognition from our Kent Employee Charity Committee. Holly, would you like to come up and tell us a little bit about what that is? And we've got a big check.
Thank you for having me. So the city of Kent hosts a couple fundraisers a year. One of them is the Spring Flame, which just occurred. And this one was of particular significance to us because not only did our staff vote for their preferred charity, but we also coordinated with Kentwood High School students who helped actually grow the flowers alongside us, which was the first time that we had done this. So that was really exciting and they turned out wonderful. And the city of Kent employees purchased those flowers. And so the donations from that and from some car wash tickets that we sold, we would like to present a check to Kentwood High School, to, sorry, to NAMI on behalf of the retailers who helped support the effort. There was Carpenito Brothers, Johnson Home and Garden in Maple Valley, Home Depot in Kent, and Fred Meyer in Kent. So it was truly a community effort, which was really fun. And the city is proud to provide a check from all of the community to our wonderful organization, NAMI, which is a local charity, National Alliance for Mental Illness. And we would like to have you come up if you're inclined. And we will present you with this very impressive check for $2,662.
Thank you.
And thank you so much for being here, too. And we have Renee from Kentwood High School, too. Quite a few of the students that participated alongside Public Works who helped make this happen. So it was a really special and fun event for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You should go up there, too.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you so much, Holly. And next up, we have appointment to Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. Michelle Wilmot will come introduce.
Good afternoon or good evening, council members. Michelle Wilmot, City of Kent Economic Development Committee, as well as staff to Kent's Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. It's my pleasure to introduce to you Mr. Jim Moran. He is the newly appointed general manager at the Best Western Plaza by the Green over here by Riverbend Golf Course. He has taken the spot vacated by our previous LTAC member named Jim Hutchinson, who is celebrating his long deserved retirement right now. But Jim brings to us great tourism experience. He has worked in the cruise industry. He's worked for Teatro Zanzani. I hope some of us are familiar with that. He's worked in Las Vegas and also most recently at the Sea-Tac, what was it, the Comfort Inn?
The Country Inn.
The Sea-Tac Country Inn and Suites. And now with the Best Western here by the Green. We are very confident that he is going to bring great expertise and experience to our Lodging Tax Committee's discussions about how we best promote Kent as a destination for business and leisure travel. And we are real excited to have him join our committee. And I really am happy that he was able to come tonight so he could meet you all. I know Councilmember Boyce, our chair of our committee, I'm excited for you to meet Jim and work with him. But please help welcome Jim Moran to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee.
Thank you.
Jim, thank you for joining us this evening and thank you for joining our Lodging Tax Committee. We are really, really grateful and excited to get to work together.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I make a quick comment, too?
Absolutely, Councilmember Boyce.
Also, I'd like to welcome you. We have a big responsibility for looking at our lodging tax and how do we distribute the fund. And definitely looking forward to having you on the team. And Andrew was such a huge player on the team. And I know you can easily step in and maybe a member of the team. So welcome, glad to have you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you. Glad to be here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on our agenda is a proclamation, and it is a proclamation for National Public Works Week. Chad, you want to join us up here? And any of our public works folks, I see a couple of you. You've got to represent for your team members. So the proclamation says, whereas the city of Kent recognizes that the men and women in Kent who provide and maintain public works, infrastructure, facilities, and services are of vital importance to sustainable communities and to the health, safety, and well-being of the people. And whereas such facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees from state and local government and the private sector who are responsible for and who plan, design, build, operate, and maintain the transportation, water, wastewater, drainage, infrastructure, the list is really long. Facilities, streets, and who deliver solid waste, transit, and fleet services are essential to serving our residents. And whereas it is in the public interest for citizens, civic leaders, and children of the United States of America to gain knowledge of and to maintain an interest in the understanding of the importance of public works programs and for their respective communities. And whereas the year 2024 marks the 64th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by American Public Works Association. Now therefore I, Dana Ralph, Mayor of Kent, do hereby proclaim May 19 through the 25, 2024, to be National Public Works Week and urge all of our residents to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions that they make to our national health, safety, welfare, and quality of life.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Thanks for that, Mayor and Council. I'd like to say I represent about 200 employees that help serve the city of Kent. Folks that are out there 24 hours a day taking care of things when they're needed. The rest of the time, we're out there when people can see us taking care of things. So it's neat to be in the business. And one of the things, you know, in past years, we've had some get togethers over at Show Earth between the pandemic and other necessities. We haven't done that more recently, but I'll tell you that one of the things we want to get out to the public is just there are great jobs and great careers in public works, very much needed and very rewarding. So it's really an honor to be able to serve the public and those folks that we're able to interact with. A big thank you.
Thank you, Chad. I will say I am very grateful for everyone in our Public Works Department, from planning to execution, operations, maintenance, all of those things. One of the things I always tell people is as long as you're not thinking about it, we're doing a really good job. But we want to make sure that we're recognizing that really good job that's being done. So thank you. And thank you both for playing along with us tonight. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
All right, we are going to move on on the agenda to community events. Council President.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have a few events happening at SSS Show Earth Center. On June 1 is Kent International Festival. And this event is free to our community and you get to learn a lot about all the different neighbors who live in our community. So I would encourage you to attend this event at Show Earth Center. August 17 is Lamb of God and Mastodon. And October 5 is Junior Age Concert. And that is all the events I have so far. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. June 5, 6:00 to 7:30, right across the parking lot. We have the summer art exhibit. You'll be able to meet the artists, see the new art displays. And there's also refreshments and entertainment. And then on June 8, 9:00 to 3:00, Canyon Ridge Middle School, we have one of our recycling events. So that is it for me.
All right. Councilmember Boyce?
I would be remiss if Gwen might be testing me in a time. So we do have Juneteenth coming up here and we have that on Saturday, June 27. And it's from 10:00 to 3:00 p.m. at Murrell Park. Thank you. June 22, yes.
22, okay. Perfect. All right, we are now going to move on on our agenda. We have a special guest this evening. Senator Karen Kaiser is joining us to give us our last legislative update, but not our last visit to council. How about that? Thank you, Senator Kaiser, for being here this evening.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, members of the council. It's so good to see you all. It's been a while and I am really happy to be able to come and give you my last legislative report, which is kind of hard to believe after all these years. We've done this for a long time and it's been such an honor and such a privilege. And I've appreciated the support of the city of Kent for so long. So let me tell you, I know you've already had Senator Kaufman come and speak to you about what we've done. And also Breann came and gave you her update. But let me give you a little more. And I hope if you have any questions, you'll let me know. We were able, of course, in a 60-day session to get a substantial, but you know, sort of small budget, supplemental kind of budget done. But I want you to know 95% of the bills that pass in our Senate are bipartisan. We don't have this infection of partisanship that's going on in Congress. We work across the aisle and try to get to yes and try to find common cause. And we've been pretty successful at that. Yes, there are some divisions, but it's not personal. In the short session this year, we were also able to have the supplemental budget really address really the most pressing needs. And the budget has been balanced and with a reserve and a rainy day fund so that we now have a AAA bond rating. Now anybody who has to do debt vehicles, bonds, knows that a AAA bond rating is a lot better than a double A. So we did okay with that. And we have, over the years, been ranked in the top 10. And we have, over the years, been ranked in the top 10 for business in the whole country, in the top 5 for working people in the whole country. So I think our financial house is in order. On the issue of public safety, we all know random violence and the kinds of crimes we see on the street have increased over the last few years, especially in our South King County communities. And our police staffing has fallen because we haven't been able to hire enough officers. Police work and public safety programs are mostly a local issue. But the state has to be a good partner. We have to provide the resources and whatever other help we can to get you the tools you need to do the job you need to do to keep our community safe. It's really our top priority. As you know, I sponsored a little bill, sent a bill 6076 at your request. And we made a good showing of why this is important and needed. And even though we didn't get it passed this year, it isn't going away. The issue isn't going away, and neither is the idea. So keep at it. Persistence pays off in the legislature. We need to have more revenues at the local level. And having them dedicated to public safety makes a whole lot of sense and I think would be popular with our citizens. So our operating budget did do a few things that will help with public safety. I wanted to mention a couple that are pretty important. One is, as you know, in the past, we have had the states pay, or not the states, the cities pay 70, 75% of the training costs of our officers being trained at our, our training academies. We're going to cover that 100% by the state budget. I've got my numbers mixed up. 25% from the city, 75% from the state. The state is now going to do 100%. So that takes a little bit of a bite out of, out of what has been an obligation for every police officer you hire that needs training at our academies. In addition, we passed a bill I'm really excited about. And I hope you keep an eye on it. It's 5424. It was John Lovick's bill, Senator Lovick's bill. And this will encourage, I believe, diversification of our police force. Because for the first time, it will allow for flexible hours for police officers. Experienced police officers now must work 40 hours a week. There is no possibility of working part-time. Well, I'll tell you, some people sometimes need to have some part-time work. Maybe they're having a baby. Maybe they're having a family issue. And they maybe need to work Friday, Saturday, and Sunday and not the rest of the week. We now have the ability with this bill to allow for flexible hours for our experienced police officers, not for new police officers, but for people who've been on the force for several years and have real experience. And if they need to step back and do part-time work for a few years, we'll work, we'll work with them and allow that. And I think that will help us reach our goal of getting a 30% of the women in our police agencies by, I think, 2030 is the goal. We also expanded the ability of individuals to apply for police officer positions, including DACA recipients and permanent residents. Currently, both of those categories of individuals are not allowed in police officer training. And I know that because my son-in-law was from France. And even though he was here legally, he couldn't get a police job. And he was a police officer in France. So it was kind of nuts. Anyway, the other bill that we passed will allow firearm safety that you may have heard about in public places like zoos and public libraries, where open carry in those areas can be intimidating, especially with children and families. We're also requiring firearm dealers to store their inventory securely, to have them under lock and key, and to require gun owners to report any lost or stolen guns within 24 hours. So that's the kind of, more or less, the police agency kind of work we did. We did also do some catalytic converter theft work again. We did the metal theft bill a couple of years ago. This year, we added a few more tweaks, making trafficking in converter, catalytic converters a Class C felony. And also requiring that sellers get either a driver's ID or other ID that can be verified before they purchase a catalytic converter. And when a car is sold by a dealer, the dealer must offer to engrave the VIN number on the catalytic converter for the new owner. So all of those pieces are ways to get at this rampant catalytic converter theft, which is incurring in parking lots and all kinds of homes in, in the area. We also did pass the initiative, Initiative 2113, to allow for the police pursuits as they were before. I want to mention a little bit about transportation. We did actually continue to fund the Puget Sound Gateway Project for both Highway 167 and 509. And that was a little bit of a struggle. But we were able to maintain the funding for that big, huge project. That will be a multi-year project, as you know. But we're still on track to get it done on time, on budget. And we were also able to make, for the first time on our airport issues over on the west side of the area, a partnership, can you believe it, with the Port of Seattle? We did it. And we now have a partnership with the port, King County, the state, and our local airport communities to create a grant program to address noise and air pollution issues and to work together for change and to try and remediate the issues that have caused a lot of harm for a lot of homeowners in the airport communities. So we, it's a positive step. And we did it in a kind of collegial way. Now, I want to tell you, the very first bill I filed when I got to the legislature was a study on noise pollution. So my very last bill was a Senate Bill 5955 that the governor signed here in Kent, and which was really nice of him to do. And that was the bill to create this new partnership with the Port of Seattle to help our homeowners and residents in airport communities. Just a little bit about housing. We've invested a whole lot of money into all kinds of different housing projects. 127 million was added this year to the Housing Trust Fund. And we are taking many different ways to go forward with affordable housing for more and more people. One that I think is particularly helpful to our communities is a property tax exemption for seniors and disabled people who put ADUs, those accessory dwelling units, like backyard cottages, on their property. It would create additional protections for people and options for people who maybe can't afford a full-blown house but could use an ADU for a few years. And so that's another option for homeowners to, to look at. And we did also do some more protections for mobile homeowners as well. Because we do have quite a few mobile home parks that are in a little vulnerable position at this point. So I'm going to just stop there again, give you my thanks for your graciousness in allowing me to give you, give you my last legislative report for your courage in putting forward the proposal to have a sales tax increase for public safety. That is not a popular thing, as you know, but it's important to talk about and to put forward. And I want to thank you for your leadership on that issue.
Senator Kaiser, I want to say thank you to you for being willing to take that up. Stepping up, as you said, not always the most popular thing. But we have heard from residents over and over and over again that they want to feel safer. And part of that is, is more police staffing. So your willingness to take that on, we are so grateful for. I want to say thank you for all of the work that you have done for Kent. There, I think there are two kinds of legislators. There's those that run and do things because there's an agenda, a personal agenda. And there are those that are there to listen to the community and do right by the community. And you have always been the latter. You have always taken the time to listen to what our residents are saying, what our council is saying, and making those your priorities. And we are going to miss you.
Can I just share a personal story?
Absolutely.
One of my first campaigns, I was doorbelling on the West Hill Cambridge neighborhood. And I knocked on doors and talked to people. And one of the people I talked to were parents of young men who had schizophrenia. And they were members of NAMI, the National Association of the Mentally Ill. And they asked me to think about legislation to allow what's called an advanced directive, a mental health advanced directive, so that when their son would decompensate, which occasionally happened when he went off his meds, they would have some power to take care of his apartment, his cat, his financials, so that when he recovered, things wouldn't be in total shambles. And we got it passed after about four years. This last year, we updated it. And it's now in a really good position for people to use when they have a family member with mental illness and they need some help having ways to help their loved one.
See, that's the responsiveness. I love that. Thank you for sharing that so much.
Thank you so much. It's been my privilege.
I've got a few, I've got a few folks lined up here if you want to hang on just one second. Council President.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Senator Kaiser, I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. Your commitment to our community and your heart for public service has been amazing. And we value you. I know that of not just 33rd and Kent, you've impacted lives of countless Washingtonians. And how you champion for women's economic progress and how you economic, you know, you're championing for all of our communities. The work you have done in the Senate has been amazing to all of us. So thank you so much, and we are definitely going to miss you. And I wish you the best, and I hope I'll continue seeing you around.
Now you have to stop or I'll start crying.
Councilmember Boyce.
I try not to make it right, okay? Hey, a true example of a legislator is really is the willingness to come across the aisle. It's not about a Republican, about a Democrat. It's about thinking about the people. I mean, you talk about the stuff that you're doing with public safety. You talk about the stuff that you've done with transportation. Really, a true example of really trying to make things work. So I just want to say thank you. You're going out for Big Bang. And I'm going to ask everybody to stand up and give you a standing ovation. So please.
Thank you. We're not, we're not done yet. Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to say more of the same thing. You have always supported Kent. You've supported people and businesses in Kent. You show up for Kent, whether it's at meetings like this, meetings in the parks. You come not only for when it's time, when you're needed, because there might be trouble. You're here whether there's trouble. You're here whether it's something that you, as long as you believe and stand for it. You're not afraid to stand up and represent why you took that stance. I love the honesty that you've put forth, the forthrightness that you've always, that you've always shown and modeled. And I just really respect you and think that you are a person to emulate. You have been here for those hard times. But you also come out to Kent to hang out at events at our park. When you hear that there's a festival going on, you come to Kent. You know, a lot of people don't have time to do that, especially when they don't actually live here. You come to learn and know the district that you represent. So I know that you have us at heart, and I know you always will. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Councilmember Boyd.
Yes, Senator Kaiser. You know, I'm gonna miss you, right? Because you've always been there. You always had the right words to say. Every time I saw you, every time we spoke. And everywhere I go, I see you. As a matter of fact, this is like the second time this month. You know, you're, you're like a mentor to me. And like you said, you always speak for the, for the right people. I mean, the right times, the right things. You know, you never have a divide. And I'll see you again, okay? All right, thank you for all the work you've done.
Well, you have brought my tears to my eyes. I just want to say it's been my privilege.
Want to do, can we do a picture?
Oh, yeah. How do we do this?
Yeah, let's go down there. And we're gonna, we're gonna come down.
Oh, and then down, okay.
All right, absolute class act.
Who's gonna follow her?
That's what I'm saying. It's a, so grateful there. All right. Who's literally going to follow her is Assistant Chief Jared Kastner for our public safety report this evening. AC Kastner.
Madam Mayor, Madam President, council members, thank you for having me this evening. That is a tough act to follow. But see what we can do. Going to give the public safety report on behalf of Chief Padilla, who's out of town at a conference. Talk a little bit about some awards that we have given out already previously, and then a little update on Phoenix Court Department and the work we've done there. Start with the awards. Start with Sergeant Meyer. The chief awarded him the Award of Professional Excellence, his work with the Project Be Free group. I'll read you what he received. Sergeant Landon Meyer developed a partnership with the Domestic Violence Victim Advocacy Group called Project Be Free. The mission of Project Be Free is to provide crisis response to individuals affected by domestic violence. They utilize partnerships within the community that allow for support for those in need. They accomplish this by providing in-the-field response when asked by the police department. Sergeant Meyer completed a memorandum of understanding with the group with the assistance of our legal department. He then coordinated trainings with the group and all members of the department. And he is still our liaison with the group, tracks the success and failures, and provides data to the program to the chief. Sergeant Lander Meyer was awarded this award previously. Couldn't be here tonight, but we're recognizing him. And also, I want to kind of give you a few updates on the stats on this program. This program has been a huge benefit to our department and the city itself. The work that they do, the important part is their response group. They come to the scenes in which the police are at and help them mitigate the circumstances and offer the resources on the spot. And that's really the, the key and the important part to that. Having those relationships, having those resources readily available to stop the cycle and give alternatives that are beneficial. So a couple of the, the slides that are next are just graphs that show the data. You'll see that when you look at it, Kent and the call response is a lot, lot higher than other cities. If you look at Renton, Auburn, Seattle, a lot of it mainly is because of our population. It's a little bit larger than a lot of the cities. And our officers have really embraced this program. And they utilize Project Be Free as often as they can. And so the data is demonstrating that there's success with this group. And the partnership is strong, and it continues to grow. So if you look at the next slide, this one shows 22, 2022, 2023, and 2024. 2023 is where you see the, the spike where orange. That's because we didn't start that until November of '23. And although our bars are higher and our usage is higher, it's not because we have more domestic violence occurrences in Kent. It's just that our officers are utilizing them more. And again, our population is larger than their first two cities, which would be Tukwila and Newcastle, in which they started. So overall, it's a great partnership, continues to grow stronger. And the group provides a service that we're finding benefit all the way around. And the group provides a service that we're finding benefit all the way around for both our department and the community. The other award that we issued was a lifesaving medal to Officer Isaiah Munoz. On October 5th, 2023, Officer Isaiah Munoz responded to a blocking disabled vehicle on South 212th Street overpass over 167. He arrived to find a distraught female who was upset with her life and wanted to be left alone. Officer Munoz was talking with the female. She moved towards the railing of the overpass. She put her foot on the railing and was in the process of jumping 30 feet below to Highway 167, when Officer Munoz was able to stop her and prevent that from happening. He was commended for his quick actions, and it embodies the Kent Police Department's mission statement. Really had an impact at that moment. And so, he received the lifesaving medal. And then, as we move on, the Phoenix Court update. Basically, I'll show a little bit of a data comparison, January to April of 2023 versus now, April of 2024. As you recall, it was a huge effort involving multiple departments in the city. A new tact by using the law department for both civil lawsuit and to develop a criminal case as they weren't being the partners that we would like in our community, as well as when we had conversations with them, as you recall. At that time, we did only have one NRT officer, Officer Steffes, who really spearheaded it and got it off the ground. And it continues to show a significant improvement. If you look at the stats in 2024, which is in the orange, you'll see that order violations, burglary, harassment, and hit-and-run, property damage, those are the categories. The 20% is just because really there were five calls in April. But, the comparison in this case, if you look at the blue, in 2023, we were dealing with weapons calls, assault calls, warrant arrests, trespassing, outside agency vehicle recoveries from being stolen and eluding from the police in that area. And you can see the shift of the calls to now more that you would expect to see in an apartment only because of a concentrated population. So, you have harassment calls that we go to, hit-and-run or property damage, order violations. So, there's been a shift in the amount of volatile calls that we may respond to. And then, as you look, this, it's small print, but really it's CAD-generated, our calls for service. It's for April of 2024, which is the one that you see to the left, and 2023, which is to the right. There's 18 calls for service in April of 2024 versus 60 calls for service in April of 2023. That's a 70% decrease in our response. There's still work to be done. We continue to have a presence up there, work with the management, work with the city, and make sure it's going in the, in the right direction. But, the stats do show that our increased focus and our problem-solving as a city and as a police department together with multi-services did have an impact that was needed, as you know. Are there any questions?
Thank you. It is really nice to see those statistics. Phoenix Court was, our biggest concern as a city was the law-abiding citizens living there and what they were having to endure. And so, the fact that they are definitely in a much safer place could not be more grateful for both Officer Steffes and our entire legal team working, working through that process. It continues. But, we have started to see some of those improvements and the data shows that. So, thank you.
And we thank you for your support on that because as we had conversations previously, the police department just couldn't do it alone. So, thank you.
Any questions for Assistant Chief Kastner? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are going to move on to reports. Opportunity for everyone sitting up here on the dais to report out on the meetings that they participate in outside of regular council meetings. So, there are regional meetings that happen all the time. And making sure that Kent's voice is heard at those meetings is really important, both as policy is being set for the region and the state, and as funds are being distributed and grant money is available. So, very, very grateful for the work that everyone up here does. I've got a couple of quick reports. Transportation Policy Board, this last meeting, we really spent it focusing on data, the availability of data, collecting that. As we roll into starting to think about the next regional transportation plan, wanting to make sure that all of the board members have the data that they need as we, as we start to build that plan. So, modeling regarding climate, things like infrastructure where it exists, sidewalks, those kinds of things in our region. So, again, just a lot of data. If you are interested in that, I definitely would suggest watching the meeting. There's a lot of resources and really interesting information out there. Additionally, I sit on the Regional Policy Council. This last week, we passed the implementation plan for the crisis care centers. So, levy that was passed last year in King County that will be bringing five crisis care centers to our county, four across the, across the county and one youth facility. The implementation plan is the guidelines by which King County will build out this system. And Sound Cities Association was actively engaged in this plan. Several of the things that we wanted to make sure were in there were that jurisdictions had citing, had input into citing and providers, making sure that the location in the region makes sense and that the provider running that location makes sense. We, we got those kinds of things worked in there. Conversations around funding, transportation, how people are accessing those resources. All in all, I think that the implementation plan really represents what the cities were looking for in that process. So, so proud of that work. Last is on a very fun note. Had an opportunity to go today. We have a, a new food manufacturing business joining us here in the Kent Valley. They'll be opening up later this summer and it's Top Pot Donuts. So, they are moving their production facility into the Kent Valley. Had a chance to meet with their CFO and their CEO, talk about the work that they're doing. They make about 40,000 donuts a day. It's a lot of donuts, 15 million a year. And were, they, they found huge value in the Kent Valleys, all of the things that council has talked about repeatedly, especially around Rally the Valley, making sure that it's a great place for their employees to come to, those kinds of things. So, really excited to see that new business coming to Kent and it was fun to get to visit. Pat, your report, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Council. Two, two things here. Just a reminder that we have our council retreat on Friday at Green River Community College at Kent Station, starting at 8:30 a.m. And then, finally, I want to just give a shout out to Adam Smith's office for his office's support of the city's request for federal funding for the police mobile command vehicle. We made the shortlist. And so, our requests will go to the House Appropriations Committee for consideration for the fiscal year 2025 budget request. So, this could be a very long process. As you know, they just passed the budget for this year about a month and a half ago. So, but we are very hopeful that we make the final cut and we have funding for that, for that police vehicle. So, that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We had our committee of the whole earlier this afternoon. And we had conversation on budget adjustments from January through April. We also had our committee, Council Workshop, where we had a comprehensive plan update from our staff for 2044. And those updates are regular and they can be watched. We get those updates regularly. And that information is all available on the website to watch or on Facebook. We also had an update from traffic safety policy. Great presentation on our target, Target Zero Plan to increase safety of our streets for pedestrians and drivers and all included who use the access or, who are on our roads, basically. And we, our goal is to have that plan adopted by this fall. So, our community, they're actually, sorry, the staff is in the process of getting community engagement right now. So, if you have any feedback, you can provide that on EngageKent.gov? Is that, or is, dot com, I think? EngageKent.com. And we also had an update from Clark Springs Water Supply Habitat Conservation, Conservation. I am really having a hard time right now. Drink some water. Apologize. All that information is available from our previous meeting on our website. I do serve as the Chair for Puget Sound Clean Air Agency Advisory Council, and we had our meeting on May 8th. We had another update on wildfire smoke updates, and that season is coming up pretty soon. So, for everyone that is, has health issues or, you know, you're, just feel that there's wildfire in, in the, in the air, you can check the status on map.pscleanair.gov of wildfires and the smoke in the area. You can also use fire.aernow.gov. And MRF 13 Do-It-Yourself Filter Kits, they cost about $50. And you can get information, you can usually buy the supplies from Home Depot or any of the other stores, including McLendons. And that Do-It-Yourself filter information is available on switch.org, and that was great. We also had an update on strategic plan. And main concept of, or main takeaway from our presentation was how equity is part of everything that the agency is working on right now. I also serve on Domestic Violence Initiative Regional Task Force with King County. And we had a great presentation on Survivor's First Program, which is in partnership with YMCA. And that program is through King County Prosecutor Office. And the presentation, they mentioned that their referrals for this program are on the pace to double from 2023 and 2022. So. And the other big thing that was part of the presentation was Refuse to Abuse Run, that used to happen. I know I've participated in it and I have seen Kim there as well. It's not going to be happening. It's actually going to be a game day now on June 16. It's going to be a game between Texas Rangers and Mariners. And this actually supports programs, the funding from that event supports programs for Washington State Advocacy for Domestic Violence. So, that is not as fun, but I guess it's fun to watch, right? You're not running, but you're sitting there watching. So, that could be fun, maybe. We also had an update on Domestic Violence International Project Intervention Project run by Seattle Municipal Court. And this is focused on not just the victims, but also the person who is causing the harm. And they're talking about the intervention, how it, so far it's been effective. 80% of the individuals who go through that program are successful. And they've only seen about 20% who are repeat offenders. But, that's just a short-term update. So, we'll see how it goes along as they continue through that. Next meeting for this committee will actually be happening here at our council chambers on September 10, 9 to 10:30, if any of my colleagues want to be here to participate. A couple of things that I attended over the last couple of weeks, it's been, we had a council day celebration at Shoreower Center, which was a great celebration by the community. Mayor Dinaroff was there, Councilmember Troutner was there. And I'm sure we had some social media, I guess, updates on why is there so much traffic? But, there was a celebration going on. There was a parade downtown. I also attended Kent Bike rodeo this weekend by our Kent Bike Advisory Board. And that was great fun to see our Kent Police there fitting helmets on little kids and our public works there, getting feedback on Target Zero. And their kids were there with their bikes and ride around the police officers. And that was great, too. I think it's, it's a great event happening in our community. And I also attended the scholarship event by Kent Community Foundation. So, congratulations to all the recipients and 2024 graduates this year. That ends my report. Now, we're going to go to my colleagues, Councilmember Troutner.
Thank you, Madam President. I am Vice Chair of the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority Governance Board. And I serve on that board with Councilmember Larmour and Councilmember Boyd. Just a few highlights from our last meeting. We had a captain promotion. We also had quite a few proclamations, most of which we also recognized here at our last council meeting. And then, the RFA recently held a very successful diversity and recruiting workshop. And then, Chief Tyreman gave a presentation on GEMT, which is Ground Emergency Medical Transport. It's a result of House Bill 2007, which provides supplemental payments to publicly owned or operated GEMT providers. So, it covers the funding gap between the actual cost of transporting someone and the amount that is received from Medicaid. So, the RFA is exploring this idea and working with TRIMED to provide personnel and ambulances to staff two units. They would contract with EMTs, which will be housed in two fire stations. So, really exciting opportunity for our, the RFA and TRIMED to even work better together to provide better coverage for our community. The hope is to implement this in September. Our next meeting for the RFA will be on a different night. We will meet on Thursday, June 13th. And then, lastly, I serve on the Regional Transit Committee. We had a briefing on Metro's ridership recovery and service planning. And during COVID, as you could imagine, ridership changed across South King County. We saw great ridership continue in Kent. So, people in our community are using transit. As you could also imagine, though, patterns have changed with people working from home and people having hybrid work schedules. So, they're seeing staffing shortfalls. And in the future, the Metro will continue to work on stabilizing and growing transit service. But, again, in Kent, we're seeing great ridership. So, that's good news. And Madam Chair, that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Troutner. Councilmember Larmour.
Thank you, Council President. I serve on the King County Aging and Disability Youth Advisory Council. And in our last meeting, we had a presentation from the Washington State Action Plan for Dementia. This is a state-level program through Health and Human Services, I believe. Really great presentation. There was a lot, a lot of information shared, a lot of links that I would like to share out. Unfortunately, usually links are something I can read, but these were particularly long. So, I think the best thing I'm going to do is recommend people can either email me and reach out for this information, or I'll put them on my Facebook page. But, they shared some really great information about resources for families who have a member with dementia. First, I think the thing that stood out to me is that dementia is not an normal part of aging. And that is important to seek early detection and early medical intervention. One of their missions, too, is to also educate medical practitioners. And they do have continuing education programs for anybody in the medical field that needs those credits and wants to specifically learn about dementia and dementia progress and the study and research of this disease. Like I said, I will share some great resource links. They have a legal planning toolkit. They actually even have some pro bono legal services for families. And a dementia roadmap that helps guide you through some of the medical diagnosis processes. So, again, some important links. They're just too long to read. I will share them out on personal channels for anyone in the public. It's welcome to email me for those as well. Thank you. That ends my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Larmour. Councilmember Boyd, please.
Thank you, Madam President. I am your representative for PIC, which is Public Issue Committee. We had a meeting on the 8th. One thing we talked about was, we had a subject around the regional alignment of asylum and refugees, refugees crisis. So, the SCA board direct the SCA staff to interact with cities regarding ongoing asylum crisis. Also, we were looking at putting together a list of principles and the principle, principle to put in the language to really start some conversation at the regional level. So, a lot of conversation around this area of such a matter. So, we're going to bring this back and really try to, because at the end of the day, I mean, South King County seemed to be impacted more than any other cities. And really, we were talking about how can we get some other cities to kind of step in and, and help out. So, good dialogue. And, you know, we'll bring this back and hopefully be able to come to some consensus on how the language and principle could be so we can start talking about it at the regional level. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyd. Please.
Yes, I also sit on the RFA Puget Sound Fire with Council, Councilmember Troutner and Larmour. What we talked about over the, our last meeting was that the FLOCK system is, the people are getting the word out. Recently, CTEC just purchased some FLOCK systems. And now, the city of Covington is also trying to get the systems too. They, they're looking at buying them as well. And we all And we also, what we found out that we had an employment offer to one of our extended nurses, so now we have an extended nurse to our CARES program, which is bringing us all up to full staffing. And this past weekend, I had the honor to share some time with my Councilmember Fentzer. We were giving away teddy bears, and it was a nice event. I mean, it was a chilly day, but we had a good turnout, I believe, what, 250? And we had a good time. The kids loved the bears, you know, they were picky, too. They didn't like the fuzzy bears, but we had a good time, and that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyd. Councilmember Fentzer, please.
Thank you. That was about 250 with the rain and all the other events going on, so not bad. And that was through Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority, their annual event. I saw Councilmember Boyd's daughter was there, I do believe. So I'll start with MED, Mental Illness and Drug Dependency Advisory Committee. On Thursday, June 23rd, we have a special meeting, it's an extended meeting. We're going to have Dr. Vinson, Sarah Vinson, who wrote the book that we had been studying. We have now come to the end of that book, and her purpose in that was social injustice and, in parentheses, social injustice and mental health. And now we're looking at next steps. Where do we go from here? How can we implement? What are some of the best practices that she's had experience with? What has she brought, what can she share with us that has been successful in other cities and counties? So that is on Thursday. We had the, for King Conservation District, January 3rd, we'll have a redistricting meeting. And again, all of that is to help us spread the word about King Conservation District's offering access, getting it onto the ballot when it's time for elections, so that people know about the district and avail themselves to what the district offers, and maybe if some of them feel like running for office or serving on one of their committees or utilizing their services, they need to know that it's there, what it does. So we're looking at how to set up districts, three districts within King County, and we will be having public engagement, because we'll have several meetings so that we can get public input into what we come up with, to see what changes they suggest. On June 5th, again, 6 to 7:30, right across the parking lot, the Summer Art Exhibit and Public Works. The big shout, or the big pow today was that we're getting that bridge painted, the bridge over the Green River, which means there will be traffic issues. Plan your routes now. We've already started sending out notifications so that people can be aware that it's going to happen. A lot of people utilize that bridge, do not live in Kent, there will be signage, there will be social media. So the word will be going out, tell your friends, because there will be, starting in June, part of the time, there's going to be a short time there that that road is going to be closed. And a reminder, that Reef Road is going to have some, not full closures, but maybe a lane one way or the other way. So please be patient, map out your routes, and enjoy the good weather to come.
Thank you, Councilmember Fentzer. And as you see, Madam Mayor, we're all sitting at different seats, as we all have heard, if you're not at the table, you're a meal, basically, you're going to get eaten up. So we're all, we're all have a seat at the table, and I have to say, I think I win today's report. I, Councilmember, my report was bigger than Councilmember Fentzer's today.
I think you're wrong.
Yeah, yes, so with that, we're back to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. All right, we are going to move on to item number six on our agenda, which is a public hearing. We will now hold the public hearing for the 2025 to 2030 Transportation Improvement Program. Staff will give a presentation, and then I'll invite the public to provide testimony, written statements, and other evidence. Public input must relate to the subject of the public hearing. Councilmembers, you may ask questions during the hearing. If you are here to testify in this matter or present written statements or evidence, please sign up with the city clerk at the front table there next to Kim. After the hearing is closed, the council may vote on the resolution adopting the 2025 to 2030 Transportation Improvement Program. All right, we will open the public hearing, and I would like to ask David Payne, look at your up here and ready to go to make the presentation.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council President, Council members. Good evening, good to see you again. David Payne, City Transportation Planner for Kent, here to present on the Transportation Improvement Program update, the annual update for the six-year period from 2025 to 2030. So as, this evening, we'll be reviewing the schedule, the outreach and involvement process, and the projects that are being added, both removed as complete and being added to the tip. A quick review of the update, which we undergo every year in the state of Washington, all cities are required. We started the process off in January with the review of, and the brief, a brief review of the potential projects, briefing of stakeholders and project nominations. In February, we moved to draft the update material that we'd be taking out to the public for the update. And the recommendations in March, we brought the recommended projects back to the Committee of the Whole to give advance update on what we'd be taking out to the public, including our outreach tool that I'll review on the next slide. Then based on the input, and we made revisions, and the draft was provided to Committee of the Whole on May 7th, and now here we are, potentially for adoption this evening. To review the outreach and involvement that we go through each year, as a reminder, all of the projects in the tip first start as either a project or a program from the Transportation Master Plan, and that includes the safety road, the local road safety plan that was most recently updated in 2024. So we draw from all of these resources to move projects into the six-year window of the tip. We've got a sampling of the different stakeholder groups that we present to and involve with individual presentations, our workshops shown on the display. Also listed the events on the left that we go through each year, events that are shown in bold, those are all public events that are open to the public to comment on, and we receive, we receive comments or input on the proposed projects. On the right, we've got a QR code, our very popular tip, Transportation Improvement Program story map, and then a copy of the poster that's been on display at Kent Commons for the last month or so. So the first, it's not all about adding projects to the tip. We've also are removing as complete several projects this year. So very briefly, going clockwise, we've got the 240th Street Sidewalks project is complete. Had these lovely pictures on a nice sunny day, looks nice and fresh. And then the Russell Road pedestrian improvements, Phases 1 and 2, adding a shared use path or pathway from Meeker up to the 240th Street Sidewalk intersection of the completion of the crossing there and getting over to the Green River Trail. So that's a nice looking, nice looking facility. Also completed this year, and operational, the lights working now, four rectangular rapid flashing beacons at four different locations across the city, 104th Street, 104th Avenue Southeast, Southeast 240th, and two on Central Avenue. Those are all operational now. And the big project for the past year is also the 76th Avenue South North Phase. You can see just south of 212th there in the lower left-hand, lower left-hand image. So the projects being recommended to be added to the tip for this year, I'll go through a summary of each of those in turn on the next slide in piece, in one at a time. I'll also note which projects we received comments on through the outreach and engagement. The first is the Target Zero Action Plan Phase 1 Implementation. So earlier this evening, the workshop, we presented the update on where the plan is or where we are in the plan, in the process. But this would be adding a project for next year for the implementation phase for what we find or recommend and what council approves for being added in the implementation phase. Also wanted to add a plug that the next engagement event for that will be at the Juneteenth event on June 22nd at Morrel Meadows Park. And the Council President, the website once again is engaged.kentwa.gov, but you can also just do a search for Target Zero Action Plan Kent, and that it'll come up that way, The three projects being added for multimodal connections, or there are three projects being added in the category of multimodal connections. The first is the East Hill North Community Park Access Improvements. This is a project from the Transportation Master Plan to widen the roadway to add a left turn pocket and a pedestrian pathway on the east side of the road between approximately Southeast 214th Street to Southeast 221st Street. There's also a separate project that was in the tip, but we've modified it this year to add an overlay portion, and that is on 132nd Street to add curb for a walking path between Southeast 214th Way and Southeast 221st Place. I believe that contract has already been awarded and should go to construction shortly. The, and then the third project being added, recommended to be added, is Central Avenue and East Smith Street, the northeast corner, you can see in the lower left-hand image on the lower left-hand corner. That's to add more space for the pedestrian way and a little bit more spacing for the signal pole. Moving on to the preservation category, there's one project being added to the tip, recommended being added to the tip this year, that's for the 64th Avenue South and West James Streets Preservations, two streets that connect that the city hosts as part of the national highway system. So we were very fortunate to pursue a grant in the past several months, so this project is going to be fully funded, and we're very excited to have this award and this project. It also will feature, one of the projects recommended in the adopted Transportation Master Plan is for the addition of bike lanes on 64th Avenue South between Meeker and West James Street, and that will complete a connection for active users through that section. That's going to be accomplished through road reconfiguration to repurpose the travel, two of the travel lane, one of the travel lanes to bike lanes. And lastly, another regional pursuit through the Puget Sound Regional Council Governments is for, recently awarded, but we haven't received the award letter yet, is the Benson Corridor Plan. This will help really springboard off of the comprehensive plan recommendations for the Benson Corridor to take a closer look and engagement and outreach and involvement to better make linkages between the transportation, to make a transportation efficient community, to foster, to help foster a transportation efficient community and leverage the infrastructure investments that are in the corridor. Will also include potentially project development and CIPA analysis for recommendations. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have.
All right, council, any questions for David? All right, we're going to let you off easy there. At this point, we will go ahead and accept public comment. I would like to invite the public to provide testimony, written statements, or other evidence. Kim, do we have anyone signed up to testify?
I do not.
All right. Do we have any written comments?
I received one public comment from Prem Subadi, and I distributed that to the council earlier today.
All right. Thank you, Kim. So a motion would be in order to submit the public comments into the record.
So move.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. So with that, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. The public hearing is now closed. All right, council, now is the opportunity for any discussion or debate, any discussion or debate. David, you've done an amazing job describing all of this, so it sounds like to me that council, then, we are at the final step here. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2071?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution Number 2071, adopting the 2025-2030 Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Thank you very much. All right, we are going to move on to public comment. The public comment period is your opportunity to speak to the council and the mayor on issues that relate to the city of Kent or the agenda items council will consider. This is not an open public forum, and comments that do not relate to the business of the city of Kent are not permitted. Additionally, the state of Washington strictly prohibits people from using this public comment opportunity for political campaign purposes, including to support or oppose a ballot measure or any candidate for public office. Speakers may not give political campaign speeches, but must instead speak concerning a matter of the city or the city council's agenda, general business of the city of Kent. Further, in providing public comments, speakers must address the mayor and council as a whole. Remarks intended to target an individual on the dais are not permitted. Finally, please note that this public comment opportunity is for you to provide information to the mayor and the city council that you would like for us to consider, but we will not be able to answer questions during this meeting. Kim, could you please call our speakers?
Yeah, I have one person signed up to speak. Scott is going to speak on the topic of corruption.
All right, if you could come up and state your name and city of residence for the record. We do have a three-minute time limit, and that timer will go up on the screen.
Okay. My name is Scott, and I prefer not to give my last name. I actually live in the city of Roy. But before I get on to the subject I was going to talk about, I wanted to talk about the fact that you guys are hiring police officers. And I would encourage the city and the police department to be very judicious in their search for officers. I've seen numerous things on YouTube and whatnot of officers where they go, they do something wrong in one department, they leave, and they go to another department, and then they do something wrong there, and you just open yourself up for legal action if you do that. So that was my one little stipulation on that. And the other thing about that, I would encourage you also not to hire combat veterans, especially special ops veterans, because I am a veteran, I understand they're in their role, especially in special ops, but any combat role, their basic thing is they are in charge because they have the gun, and that's their attitude, and that's the wrong attitude for a police officer. I was actually a military police officer for six months. It was just temporary duty for me, but I learned a lot, and I'm just encouraging you not to hire combat veterans and especially special ops veterans, because you will have problems with them. So on to what I came here to speak about. As I said, I'm from Roy, so I commute to Kent most days. I actually work at 11 different buildings throughout the state, four of them are located here in Kent. So I'm here quite often, and I use GPS or the Google Maps to bring me up because there's different ways I can go, and I try to find the most efficient manner each day. And so sometimes it sends me up 167. And so this is what happened on February 26th, and as I was coming up, I saw a Kent police officer in the HOV lane. Now, February 26th happens to be President's Day, so it's a holiday. So I figured, well, maybe there's a chance that there's a holiday exception to the HOV lane. I looked it up later, there is not. So, and I know that police officer, even though with the dark tinted windows, you can't see if there's anyone else in the car, I know there's no one else in that vehicle with him, and yet he's driving in the HOV lane, which is a violation, okay? And this is where, this is what I was coming, bringing it up for, is because that is a small level of corruption, but it grows from there. If you let, it's just like rust. If you let it go, it's going to spread, okay? That's how corruption is. And so as an example of that, there was another day when I saw that there was a Kent police officer on 167 in the right-hand lane, and then I saw one go up in the HOV lane, probably the same one I saw the first day. And then the one in the right lane decided to go over and join his buddy in the HOV lane. So now you have two officers violating the HOV lane, okay? And this is something that is not just on the city of Kent and their police department, it's not just about the overall corruption, because there's King County officers I see or sheriff's deputies in that lane also, and even the state patrol technically are not allowed to be in that lane, because the rules are, the only exception for law enforcement is if they have their lights on. lights on. That's the only exception to using the HOV lane. That's listed in the law. And so when I saw this...
Sir, I need you to wrap up your comments.
Sure thing. So basically, it boils down to, you have a problem with corruption, I suggest you look into it. It also goes to the state and everybody else that's involved.
Thank you. All right, Kim, do we have anyone else signed up?
We do not.
Okay. Moving on in the agenda to the consent calendar, we have items A through I. This is a compilation of agenda items that the council has had opportunity to work through in workshop and receive presentations on, passed out of Committee of the Whole without any controversy. Is there a motion to approve consent calendar items A through I?
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. We have no other business tonight, but we do have two bids joining us this evening as Chad Beer and our Public Works Director. Items include South 218th Street and 98th Avenue South from 94th Place South to South 216th Street Award, and then our Green River Bridge repainting and bridge deck repair.
Thank you, Mayor. Good to be here tonight. These are two of our more monumental bids we've had over the last couple of years. We had one last week, our last meeting with the Mill Creek Reestablishment. Two bids tonight. First one's connected with the South 224th Street Corridor. A mouthful tonight. This is more of a description of the project itself, but it's, we have two more phases to complete, the 224th Corridor going up the hill between East Valley Highway and the Benson. This is the next section, largely funded, a combination of federal funds and state funds. We're excited to have the bid in. We had seven bids received. The low bid was SCI Infrastructure, just over $6 million, on an engineer's estimate of $7.8 million. And following council acceptance, we'd like to get going this summer.
All right. Any questions? All right, then a motion would be in order.
Madam Mayor, I move to award the South 218th Street, 98th Avenue South, from 94th Place South to South 216th Street Project to SCI Infrastructure LLC and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents, subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the city attorney and public works director.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. All right, Green River Bridge repainting.
Like my last time, the Green River Bridge was painted was in the 1990s. It was built in 1958, and it needs some attention. Obviously, you can see from the picture and the decking, this will replace the paint and the deck on the bridge and should be in good shape then for another 30 years, we hope. This is also largely funded almost entirely by federal funds, so excited to get this grant and move forward with the bridge repainting. Councilmember Fincher pointed out earlier that it is going to have a significant traffic impact, try and get that work done in the summer, over a two-month closure, and people will see it's quite the process. You're going to wrap up the whole bridge, have to make sure no materials get into the river, wrap it with plastic, work inside of it, get it painted, and then take all the plastic off and be a brand-new bridge. So excited to have that one going. Four bids received. A low bid was from America Group LLC for $2.7 million and change on an engineer's estimate of $3.4 million.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Chad?
Question.
Councilmember Boyes?
Just curious, have we decided on the color? Are we going to paint that bridge?
We've, there are several colors that are part of the palette that was put together for the Meeker Street Project, and a couple shades of green we've looked at, and then one of the green, we're trying to decide between agave or iceberg.
Thank you, Chad.
I think at one, at one point, I remember Council President Corr saying fuchsia might be a good color. Feel like we didn't decide that.
All right, any other questions for Chad? Okay, a motion would be in order.
Madam Mayor, I move to award the Green River Bridge repainting and bridge deck repair project to America Group LLC and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents, subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the city attorney and public works director.
Oh, second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Thanks, Chad. All right, item number 11 is executive session. We do not have one this evening, so that brings us down to the bottom of the agenda. And with that, we, oh, Councilmember Fincher, did you have something you wanted to add?
No, I was just, probably got to turn it off because thinking that bridge project, the entire time I had been on council, we have been talking about that bridge project.
All right, with that, we are adjourned.